Good evening. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to gather this evening and for the opportunity to do work on behalf of the children of this parish. Guide us in our decision-making so that we may continue to put the needs of our students first and help us to do the things necessary to continue to serve them and this community in a way that truly addresses their needs. These things we ask in your name.
Mr. Egan, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Votchay.
Mrs. Acevedo?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Egan?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Lemoine?
Here.
Mr. England?
Here.
Ms. Tysart?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. White?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. First item on the agenda are presentations of certificates for school board member training for 2020. And in your folder is a copy of each of your training certificates as required by law. We need to take continuing education. And I think every board member has completed their, the amount of hours that are necessary, and some even went beyond the necessary hours. So, great job, board members.
And I would just like to add that, you know, the Louisiana revised statutes is we as an educational community believes in professional development and training for everyone who works with us. And our school board as well have each earned at least six hours of continuing education credits and have done the appropriate in-service. And everyone around this table has exceeded those numbers of hours. And it takes that training and that up-to-date legislative input to make sure that we're keeping up with whatever the laws are of the state of Louisiana and the best educational practices so that the board members can make the appropriate policy decisions which direct the activities of our school system. And we wanted to make sure that this was presented at a public meeting. And by law, we need to then publish it and include it in the official minutes of our meeting and to publish in the official journal, which will be done then subsequent to this meeting.
So, do we need a motion?
Why don't we do the motion, just in case?
Okay, there's a motion about Mr. England, second about Mr. Long. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Okay, next item is an education committee item. Ms. Lemoine?
Thank you, Ms. Tysart. Agenda item number three is presentation of the new J-Campus Student Information System. And we have Ms. Lametta with us this evening.
Good evening. I wanted to give you all an update this evening on the fact that we are going to be transitioning actually to a new student information system. We have been using eSchool currently as our student information system. We will be transitioning to product called J-Campus by Edgear. And currently, J-Campus is being used in 60 other of the districts in Louisiana. So, the product is really focused on the needs of the students in Louisiana and the schools in Louisiana. And the reason we're taking on this transition is currently districts have to upload data to the state for accountability purposes and for funding through multiple uploads through a system called LEEDs, okay? And LEEDs is the Louisiana Educational Accountability Data System, okay? They're transitioning next school year to a system called EdLink 360. And by contract, when you have a student information system, they have to write any changes into the software to help you meet your state mandated state reporting requirements. And the company came up to us and said, "Our product is old. We've been having it for about 10 years. It cannot meet the requirements, and we can't upgrade it enough to make it meet the upload requirements." So, we looked around for other products. And in doing that, we saw that 60 other districts were using J-Campus by Edgear. And it's been actually a really streamlined product for Louisiana. They go to all the state meetings. They keep up with the requirements of Bulletin 741 and everything required to do for discipline reporting, attendance reporting, student enrollment. And it really is a streamlined product that meets our needs in Louisiana. So, what I did for you is on the bottom, just let you know what we use a student information system for. I made a visual. So, basically, it's one piece of software that we use to schedule students in classes, which would be the gray circle on the right. Now, just go around the visual. We also use it to keep track of student attendance every day and report on student attendance to the state. The teachers use it to record grades and attendance every day for the students. We use it to record discipline records and keep track of discipline records and do reporting to the state. We also house student state test scores in our student information system. And you may know, we have something called Home Access Center at eSchool where parents can log on to the state, our website in the district, and look at student grades and keep up with student progress. So, this product does have a student progress center that mirrors our Home Access Center. So, parents can log on and get access to their student grades and keep up with student progress. Additionally, one feature it also has is something called the document archiving system where we can actually load student documents for parents to log on and view. For example, when we send report cards home in the mail with the students by hand, we can load them into the document archiving system. So, the parents can log on the day we do report cards and have the report cards in almost like a storage system for their students. We can keep report cards in there, progress reports. We can put student birth certificates when they register. And it will be a one-stop shop to help parents keep track of their educational records as they log on for their students. So, that's a nice feature we have not had that we can add. And the biggest reason on the top, you see, it is a system that we use to do all of our state mandated reporting for MFP, funding, and state accountability. Currently, we have been doing some training. We trained the teachers before they left. We gave them an overview training on how to take attendance, how to put in assignments, and how to do grades. The teachers have reported it was really easy to use. It's similar to what we do now. They've been doing a grade book now for several years. So, it's really similar, but it's a lot more streamlined. So, they really have reported it was very easy to use. The system also has some really robust reports for the administrators to help get their hands on data immediately, whether it's attendance, discipline, homeroom list, whatever they need. There's a really nice set of reports. The customer service has really been fantastic for us. We've taken our data that's been in eSchool and migrated it over into J-Campus and checked it for accuracy. They've done a great job doing that. The support's been wonderful by phone. They come in person. In addition to training teachers, we've trained central office staff this summer. We've trained administrators. And we're currently training administrators to do their master schedule for next year. They come in person. They sit with them. They walk them through it. And they actually sit with them and help them do it. We have a couple more central office groups still to train. And when the teachers come back, we're going to give them another hands-on refresher to put in attendance and keep track of grades. And finally, we're using it actually now for summer school. And we wanted to go ahead and get our feet wet with it. So, we have a group of teachers in middle school, elementary, and high who are actually using it for summer school so they can be experts when they go back to the school and be some resources for their fellow teachers. We're using it to take attendance, put in grades. We're running office reports. We're doing lunch counts. We're trying to use it in every way we would during the school year to get our, you know, get our feet wet and get some teachers as experts. So, overall, we were forced in a way to make this transition, but it was a blessing. It's a lot of work to transition, but it's going to really be a relief. And so many people who are using it are reporting how easy it is, streamlined. And it's really geared to what we do need in Louisiana. So, it's been a bit of work to get it going, but everyone who's using it says, you know, they're really happy to have it and appreciative for it.
I want you to talk a little bit about the additional modules, like Medicaid and such.
Okay, yes, ma'am. In addition to the grade book, we also did purchase the Medicaid module. And we do have our nurses, occupational therapists, physical therapists, and speech therapists that we're going to train going forward. They'll put in their medical records in there, log what they do with the students. And when they log it into the J-Campus system, we bought a sister module that will load it directly into a Medicaid module, which will cut down on the amount of work we have to do to do our Medicaid billing. So, and when you enter it in J-Campus, it can immediately go into the Medicaid module. So, that's going to save us a lot of time. They also put a module in to help us check in, check out students, where we can scan their ID or their badge as they come in to check them in or check them out. And Chromebooks or hotspots. If we have to issue Chromebooks and hotspots, we can scan those and go right into their student record and keep track of what the students use. So, they've really done a good job with updating it with the needs, you know, since we moved into the pandemic phase.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lametta, for that thorough explanation. And like you said, we want to make sure that we're in compliance with all of the state mandates for reporting. So, thank you for that. Any questions for Ms. Lametta?
I have a question.
Sure.
So, I see we were mandated by the state. And what is the difference in cost?
Actually, it's 75% less in cost than we were paying for the eSchool module. ESchool's a national product, and it does a lot of things. It's not tailored directly for Louisiana. It's tailored for multiple states across the country. So, it has many features as well. But because J-Campus is streamlined for Louisiana, they can make the product for less cost. So, it's actually 75% less than we're paying for the eSchool.
That's great news.
Years ago, they've evolved into the name J-Campus. They used to be called JPAMs. And the company originated in the Shreveport area. So, they came out initially with what amounted to an electronic grade book. And they were, I guess, peddling their software, and this is a long time back, many years ago, to different school systems in the state to switch over from, you know, the old grade books we all kept that probably, like I keep my paper calendar still, but the old grade books, into an electronic grade book. And they then saw that the market was ripe, so they started to develop additional modules. And the good part about this particular company is they worked closely with the State Department of Education here in Louisiana and worked hand in hand with them to develop the software, which, to be honest, is Louisiana-specific but federally compliant as well. So, that target audience that they began with was the state of Louisiana. And like Ms. Lametta said, they have 60 of the 69 school districts. And I can remember years ago when we were looking at eSchool or looking for a student information system after, you know, after Hurricane, where we had to switch over from our old PC Link system into a new student information system. And I think Ms. Lametta, that time, was a curriculum coordinator on the committee
Yes, ma'am.
to make those determinations. And I remember talking to him and saying, "What about JPAM?" You know, because I knew they were a Louisiana company. And they kept, you know, presenting at school board association meetings, superintendent meetings. And when we looked at their software at that time, they did not have an expansive enough model. And we felt at that time, we went with the, you know, eSchool, which was a national software that had more of the bells and whistles at that particular time. But this company now has caught up with that and really surpassed it from, in our opinion, a functional software for our school system and for the state. And they're extremely responsive. And anything we need for state reporting purposes, they write immediately because they have all of the different school districts dependent upon them. So, I think it's, you know, a really good move for us to do. We were kind of, in a way, as Ms. Lametta said, forced to make a move to somewhere. ESchool wanted us to go with a companion system. I don't know. I guess I'll just say a power school is. But that is, again, another national model, which would have taken more of, they would have to modify. And fewer and fewer other systems in the state are using those. And more and more are using this particular product, which is much more Louisiana-specific, but still federally compliant as well.
And the wonderful thing is, when you call for support, you don't have to explain to them for accountability. We have to track the DCAI. They know what that is. They wrote that in to help you track it. So, you don't have to explain to a national company what data you need to help your principals look at their data in the way the state's looking at it. They know it. They go to the state meetings. And the support, we have over 20 products and software in our district. And the support we've gotten from this company is just amazing. From the hands-on training, they give us their phone numbers to call. And they answer right away. And they've just been tremendously helpful in the transition.
I'm glad to hear that.
Yes.
Changing databases can be an audacious task.
It certainly can.
And to get all your staff through that learning curve is tough. So, I'm glad to hear that they're very receptive and very open to trying to help us.
Yes. And as Votchay said, JPAMs, as they've come along, they've gotten better and better each year. So, there was a temptation to move to them actually sooner. But the monumental task of moving everyone to a new system and all the data to a new system, you really think twice before you make it. But in this case, we really didn't have a choice. We had to make the move.
Right. I used to come back every couple of years and say, "Did y'all look at this project? And what do you think?" "Oh, God, we don't want to make a switch over now." "Oh, we don't even want to think about the massive undertaking that might be." And then we were really pretty much forced into a situation where we had to make a change. And we waited long enough that their product caught up with the needs. So, it worked out well.
If you think of it, almost everyone in our district uses eSchool every single day. So, when they, we're going to go live July 1st. So, when they walk in July 1st, we have two systems running now. So, I'm telling them, "Do what you do in eSchool, and then pull up J-Campus and try it in that and get yourself just familiar." So, that, I mean, when they walk in, every single day, they open up eSchool. So, we have to make sure everyone's proficient. So, it is quite an undertaking.
I'm glad to hear that the cost is a lot less.
Yes, that was wonderful as well.
So, do we need a motion for this, or?
I don't think so. This is informational.
All right.
The cost of the software was below any threshold, and we hadn't made the decision anyway.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Lametta? Oh, Mr. Long?
It sounded like a great, great system. Talking about costs, is it a one-time cost to purchase the software?
It's a one-time cost, and then there's a recurring support cost as any software system.
And it's less
And the recurring support cost is less than what we would pay.
Oh, okay.
And that's basically, so when you call with a question, someone will answer your question and give you some help. That's what support cost is. Or if there's an issue
Or send upgrades.
Right. Or if there's an issue with the software, they'll look at it and fix it.
It's always nice when you get a better product at a lower cost. Can't beat that.
It works out nice.
And better service at a lower cost, so.
Right. Great. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Ms. Lametta? Thank you, Ms. Lametta. And thanks to all the early adopters who are piloting the software now.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Agenda item number four is personnel. So, we'll toss it to Ms. Votchay.
Okay, in front of you, we just have the regular personnel changes for the month. You can see that we're continuing to staff for vacancies that we have. I just want to call your attention to the administrative appointments that we're making. We've already talked about the principal at Shellman Elementary at our last meeting, Katie McNabb. Today, or was it yesterday? I mean, my days run into each other. I think it was yesterday. The interviews occurred for the assistant principal of Shellman Elementary, that position. The interview committee was our new principal, Katie McNabb, and Dr. Raviota and Leanne Harleton made up that three-member committee. And I do want to say that what we do and what our practice is, the other two members, Ms. Harleton and Dr. Raviota, are there for input and support and opinions. Final decisions we give to the principal of the school to choose his or her assistant principal because that's the administrative team. They have to feel comfortable with it. And they are held accountable for what happens at that school. Therefore, they should be able to choose their top administrative assistant. So, Dr. Raviota and Ms. Harleton are there for support and input. And the final decision, it usually works out to where, you know, they come to a consensus. But if there's any difference, the final decision is up to the principal. I want to say that for this particular position, there were 10 applicants, and very, very good applicants. So, we were really, feedback I got is, they could have picked at least one of four or five of those people just right off the top. And even though it was very deep throughout all 10. But the decision for the assistant principal is Andrea Woodward. Ms. Woodward has been working for us for 10 years. She had been a preschool teacher initially at Goche and then at Lacoste, is now currently at Mero Elementary as the first-grade teacher leader there. So, she's had a great deal of experience in, with those particular positions. They felt she would do an excellent job as the assistant principal of Shellman Elementary. So, that was the decision of the committee who did the interview. So, we want to congratulate Ms. Woodward on that particular position. I think she's going to do a tremendous job. And there's a new team there at Shellman Elementary that we have to just lend a great deal of support for. And so, I had a little discussion with the principal this morning, who came to really tell me the final decision. And very lengthy talk about, you know, the future for her school and the support that we could give her and where, the direction we were looking at and what we needed to do to continue improving in that area. So, wanted to make that announcement. And we're very happy to do so. The rest of these are just our normal transfers, appointments, and such.
I've got a question.
Yes, Mr. Long?
We're losing, we're losing a computer specialist on page two. Do you have plans on replacing that person, or?
We're going to take a look at what we need to do for potential or possible replacement and make some decisions.
Okay, thanks.
Again, congratulations to Katie McNabb, the new principal at Shellman Elementary, and the assistant principal, Andrea Woodward. We know both of you are going to do a super job. And just one more comment. As we all know, Shelby Benazak, our trusted secretary, is retiring this month. And again, Shelby, we're going to miss you very much. You've been great to work with, but also a great friend to all of us. And you will be missed.
My pleasure. As we said last week.
But happy retirement.
We keep with the accolades. We have only one more meeting with her this month. So, everybody's getting kind of nervous here. And what I neglected to say is, we did the interviews for a replacement for our secretary, the superintendent of the board. And that's going to be Angie Burko, who is just tremendous. She's currently Tommy Powell's secretary in Child Welfare and Attendance. So, I have to avoid him in the hallway because I'm very upset that she will be making this move. But she's been with us for many years. She's done an excellent job where she is. She's very good with, with the public, with the people who come in and out of the office. You know, child welfare and attendance is a very high-traffic area. Lots of people coming in, people who have concerns and problems. And she does a tremendous job with that in dealing with our parents and our students and members of the community. So, and one of the other pluses is that she knows, being in the school system for this long, she knows all of the people and the operations and is familiar with the principals and the assistant principal, administrators, and staff. So, while we are very unhappy that Shelby is retiring, we're very happy to welcome Angie into this particular position because we know she'll do an excellent job. And Shelby has already said that she will lend whatever assistance is necessary because she's just a good person, and we'll do that.
Congratulations to Angie, too. And we look forward to working with her as the school board secretary, superintendent's secretary and assistant. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Next item is insurance item. Mrs. Acevedo?
Okay. Renewal of access workers' compensation insurance. We have Mr. Clement.
In your packet, you have the rate quoted for the renewal of our workers' compensation insurance, excess insurance. As you know, we are self-insured for workers' compensation. But in order to be a self-insured entity, you're required by the state of Louisiana to have excess insurance as another level of protection to make sure our losses don't exceed a certain level and get out of hand. So, every year, we are required to have a policy in place for this insurance for the next year. And currently, we are with a company called Star Insurance Company. They provided us with this excess insurance for the last several years. Now, Timothy Clements from Clements Insurance is here as well. They're our agent of record for insurance, and they're the ones that have done the inquiries of the market to get quotes and test the market. And I believe they inquired, there's a limited number of carriers that will offer this type of insurance. And I believe they inquired of seven different carriers to get rates. The best rate they could get was from Star Insurance Company. It is an increase from last year. What they do is they look at our past experience and our claims. They get claims, loss runs, and they look at that and evaluate it. And they are proposing an increased premium of $70,256. Of the other six companies, a couple declined to give us a quote. The others have offered premium offers in excess of $100,000. So, this is the best offer that we could get for $500,000 retention, which is what we do, which means once our claims for any particular claim over time reach $500,000, the excess insurance kicks in. They have offered us an alternate quote. If we want to increase our self-insurance retention to $600,000, they would take 11,000, approximately $11,000 off the quote and give us a policy renewal for $59,696. But it would entail additional exposure on our part. Now, Clements Insurance, of course, is still trying to negotiate to get us a better rate. But as of right now, this is the best proposal that we have for renewal of this insurance that we're required to have. So, at this time, that is our recommendation to the board. And we'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board or comments?
Ms. Fernandez, so your recommendation is to accept the $70,000 premium?
That is our current level of exposure, $500,000, which is the minimum retain, the minimum level of retention that any of these carriers are offering. You know, we couldn't even get a low amount. If we did get a lower amount, it would be a much higher premium anyway. But we could increase our exposure to $600,000 and save a little bit of money. But as we said, it does expose us to additional potential liability.
And you did say Mr. Clements is in negotiations. So, between now and the regular board meeting, it may change?
Yeah, if we can, yeah. If they can come up with a better deal, better rates, we will present it to the board at the regular meeting. But as of this time, this is the best, the best thing going, I guess.
So, maybe we should forward this to the board with, with no recommendation?
That would be fine. That would be fine. But
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Okay.
One second.
Yes.
How often in the last couple of years have we reached the retention rate of $5,000 in claims? Do we know?
To be honest, in the 30 years I've been working for the school system, we have maybe reached it two times where we've had to access to excess insurance. It is very, very seldom that we reach that rate. There is one claim right now that is approaching close to that amount, but very seldom do we reach that amount. But it is something that is required by the state. It is an insurance policy. It is required by the state for us to have.
Okay. I think I think that's it, Fernandez.
Anyone else?
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Why the $20,000 increase?
It's based on our claims experience. As I said, we do have one claim that is approaching the 500,000. We have several claims that are in the range of between 200 and 300,000. And this is over the life of the claim. Once you have an occurrence and a claim, that claim, that person might be receiving medical services or indemnity payments for several years. And this policy is in effect for that life of the claim. So, if someone is out, say theoretically, for ten years, they're still covered by this policy. And we will be covered if, at any point in time it reaches that level, this policy will have to keep coming and cover the expenses over that $500,000 amount. So, they seem we had a few claims that are getting high. So, naturally, and plus, in the insurance market, all insurances have been going up lately. So, it's just the nature of the thing.
Mr. Clements, why is all insurance going up?
Reinsurance costs are going up. Global natural disasters, wildfires in Australia, economics, the stock market, I mean, you name it.
The banks?
Banks, everything. Everything's real good. Not all good.
Are we making a motion?
I did make a motion. I don't know if you've got a second yet.
I'll second the motion.
We have a second, Mr. Warner? We're doing a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number six, finance committee, Mr. Warner?
Thank you, Mrs. Essevedo. Item 6.1 is request to advertise for grass-cutting services.
Okay. In your pack, I'm sorry, sir.
Go ahead.
Okay. In your packets, we have a request for permission to advertise, request for proposals for grass-cutting services. As you know, we contract out our grass-cutting services. And every so often, we will go out and request proposals to see what kind of rates we could get, give everybody an opportunity to put in a proposal. So, currently, our current contract ends this October 30th, ends on September 30th, I would have guessed. So, we are requesting permission to go out for proposals for a contract for grass-cutting services for a three-year period with an option for an additional three, one-year renewals. And we will have that bid opening in August. And it will go into effect for October 1st. The only thing I would like to say for the public's information is if you approve this advertisement, there will be a mandatory pre-bid conference on August 11th at 10 o'clock a.m. in this office, right here in the school board room at the administration office. So, if any potential service providers out there would like to put in a proposal, they would be required to attend that meeting, that pre-bid conference, so that we can tell them the scope of the work and what they would be expected to do. So, right now, we're just asking for your permission to advertise.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. Any questions? We had a motion by Mr. England, seconded by Mrs. Lemoine. Any other questions?
I have a question. Ms. Fernandez, the fact that we're going out for proposals, does that mean the current, the guy that's doing it now is, he's not in the option year?
No, sir. We've exceeded all those option years. And now, we're at the point where we normally would go out and rebid it. So, this is our normal cycle. And we had to end up our normal cycle. So, we usually traditionally will go out and put it out on the market again.
Okay.
The person who has it now has done a fine job, has done an excellent job. It's just the board's practice to go out periodically.
He's not retiring or anything from the-
No, sir, not to my knowledge. I fully expect that-
That makes you know something we don't know.
I fully expect that he will put in another proposal.
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. We've got a motion by Mr. England, seconded by Mrs. Lemoine. All in favor, signify by saying aye. That motion carries. We'll move on to 6.2. Request to advertise for monthly produce solicitations.
Good evening.
Hello, Mrs. Lemoine. How are you?
Thank you. This is our annual request for permission to advertise for produce, monthly produce. So, we advertise once a year and put all the dates of the openings in the paper one time because we do have a monthly solicitation and we ask for quotations monthly. I would like to call attention to the first page. The fifteenth of the month is the date of opening, except when the fifteenth falls upon a holiday or, of course, on a weekend, or we can't open the bids then. The quotations. Also, at the bottom of the first page, there is a typographical error on that advertisement date. It will be corrected by your next meeting. But the advertisement date on the bottom of the advertisement is correct. So, we have two advertisement dates, June 25th and July 2nd, 2021. And for the next meeting, the cover page will be corrected. That was a typographical error. Just to point that out. Right?
All right. Any questions for the board for advertising for monthly produce solicitations?
I have a motion for-
Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mrs. Essevedo. All in favor for soliciting for, I mean, advertising for monthly produce solicitations? Easy as said. And I just tried to do it. Signify by saying aye. All opposed. That motion carries. And then, we'll do bid tabulation for paper, cleaning and custodial supplies. Mr. Fernandez again.
Yes, sir. Okay. In your packets is the tabulation for paper, cleaning and custodial supplies for the year 2021, 2022. We have all the items and the recommended bidder. We are recommending the low responsive bidder on each item. There were some items where vendor did not meet the specifications. So, we couldn't accept their item bid on that. And there were some items where a sample was required and the vendor did not provide a sample. So, we disqualified those, them on those particular items as well. But we're recommending the low responsive bid on each item.
I want to take a minute to peruse that. You have any questions?
I have a motion for the board.
We have a motion by Mr. Smith. Go with the lowest bid on the responsive item, seconded by Mr. Campbell. Any other questions or discussions? All right. So, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. We'll move on to item 6.4, bid tabulations for gas, diesel and other automotive fluids. Fernandez?
In your packets is the bid tabulation. We had two bidders, one on each item. We are recommending, of course, the low bidder. Fleet Core, which is Fuel Man for gasoline and diesel, and Gobert Oil for the oils and fluids.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mrs. Jackson. Any discussion? All right. No discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, would you-
That motion carries.
Chairman, would you list me as abstention?
I can.
Okay. We will.
Okay, thank you.
Shall we please note that Mr. Long abstained? All right. We move on to item 6.5. Bid tabulations for painting and body repairs of vehicles. Ms. Fernandez?
Yes, sir. In your packets, we have the bid tabulation for painting and body repairs. We had two respondents. However, one of the respondents withdrew their bid prior to the meeting tonight. So, we're recommending that we award the bid to Fidelis. Their rate is, they currently have our bid for painting and body repairs. And their rate is the same rate that they offered us for this year. So, they did not increase their price at all. So, our recommendation is to go with Fidelis on a one-body for the year 2021, 2022.
Who is the only bidder?
The only bidder that remained.
All right. So, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. White. Any other discussion? All right. So, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. And finally, bid tabulation for official journal. Mr. Fernandez?
Thank you, sir. Okay. In your packet is the tabulation for official journal. We are recommending the St. Penot Voice, who is the low bidder, the only bidder. And they are offering the same rates that they currently offer us. So, there's no increase in their rates as well. So, that is our recommendation.
Second. All right. We have a motion on the floor by Mrs. Nysart, seconded by Mr. Long. For official journal, St. Penot Parish Voice, the only one to bid, same rates. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Mr. Fernandez, you're free to go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warner.
You're welcome, Mr. Nysart.
Next item on the agenda, or the superintendent's recommendations.
Okay. Just to say in passing that we are right in the middle of all of our summer programs. And I just wanted to comment that the opening of those programs is going very smoothly. Kids look happy. We're doing the summer skills program at Davies, Andrew Jackson and Shellman High School. A lot of performing arts for the elementary students, the choral students at the, our cultural arts academy, the STEM summer camp at MoMIS. And kids seem to be happy. And it's just a joy to see everybody interacting a little bit better now. And hopefully, that's going to continue. We're going to be able to see more and better in-person interaction with our kids and our staff. So, having said that, at our regular meeting in two weeks, if you remember last month, you approved that we go off an RFP for seventh and eighth grade science materials. So, we'll be opening those RFPs between now and the regular meeting. The committee will sit there and evaluate. You know, the middle school group will evaluate the proposals we have and bring that to you at the regular school board meeting in two weeks. And also with that, as you've been following the news with some type of a pay raise from the state is being proposed at this point for certificated staff for $800 for the year and support staff for $400. We were hoping for more. You know, it started out at 400 and 200. So, it has doubled to 800 and 400. The legislative session ends Thursday. We were hoping for some last-minute maneuvering with general fund monies to increase that. I don't think that's going to happen, to be honest. But we will know that for sure by Thursday. I'm also looking at our budget to see if it remains at 800 and 400, if we can do a little something more than that. I know we have a contract that expires in 2023. But I've talked with Ms. Russell, who is the president of our teachers' association, and said that we're looking to see if we can add a couple of hundred to each one, to the support people and to the teachers. So, we're running those numbers in hope that we can do that. But whatever the numbers shake out to be at our regular meeting in two weeks, then we would have to make that proposal to the board and have you incorporate that into our 21, 22 budget, which begins on July 1st. So, I just wanted to give everybody a heads up on that. And so that as we crunch numbers and see what the outcome of the legislature is, that we will bring it to you in the two weeks from now. Okay?
Can I ask a question about that? So, would you have to renew the contract with the union on that or just amend it?
No. I think that we have a relationship. I wanted to, you know, I want to do something. If we have funds available with these federal funds that are coming in the next three years, if that is available to us, I want to make sure, and I know this board wants to make sure, because y'all have voiced that time and time again, that if we have a few dollars, we want to pass it along to the employees. And even though the contract doesn't expire till 2023, in a good faith effort, you know, I contacted Ms. Russell and said, "This is what I would like to do." And her reaction was, "That's great. I'm sure everybody would appreciate anything that extra that could be done. So, we can just come to a little understanding with that." I mean, we're not talking about negotiations or anything like that. But I think it's incumbent upon us, and y'all have voiced it over and over again, even though we're right in the middle of a four-year contract, if dollars become available, we don't want, we want to make sure it does get passed on to our employees. Because it's, you know, they're the people that make this whole, this whole thing work, as they say. So, we're doing the numbers right now and make it not a supplement, but a permanent part of the schedule. And we're not talking a lot here. You know, I don't want people to think, "Oh, there's a lot of money out there running." There isn't, because these would be recurring funds, funds that we would have to continue to support beyond, say, a federal allocation for a year or two. So, we're going to see what we can do and maybe add a couple of hundred to get it to where we were hoping the state would have at least done this year.
Well, I think it's fantastic. I just was asking that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else on that issue? Just well-deserved, that's for sure.
Whatever we can do, that's a priority.
Yes, absolutely. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, there being no other business? Or is there a motion to adjourn?
Move, we adjourn.
There's a motion of Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Essevedo. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you and good night.